Okay, welcome everyone. So the time is now 6:30. Today's Monday, August 24th, 2020 meeting for the Science City Council regular meeting. This is the 13th City Council meeting held via online conferencing application. All city council members and city staff are participating from remote locations. And the meeting will continue as long as there is a forum. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call on every member to make sure you have had an opportunity to ask questions. I will now ask our city clerk to start a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Gettle?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Here.
Counselor Farmer?
Here.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Estucci?
I'm here Jackie, but I'm participating by phone because there seems to be a configuration issue with the meeting link.
Yeah, we, we, a few of us had issues with that too. We'll try to figure that out as well. Counselor Hicks? Counselor Hicks, I see you're there. Let me unmute you. Counselor Hicks? Counselor? Perfect. Counselor Burisma?
I'm here.
City Manager Casey?
Here.
City Clerk Lenteria, I am here. Finance Director Alba?
Here.
Perfect. Fire Chief Anderson? I saw he is here as well. Fire Chief Anderson? I see he's in our attendance, so maybe we can check him later. Police Chief Escalera?
Do you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, Fire Chief.
I'm here.
Thank you. Police Chief Escalera? I see he's here as well. We can get back to him. Public Works Director Fisher?
I'm, I'm here Jackie, if you can hear me now.
Perfect, thank you Chief. Public Works Director Fisher? I see he's here as well. We can get back to him.
Jackie, if I may, just FYI, it appears that you've shared your calendar screen rather than the agenda screen at the moment. There you go. Thank you.
Good, thank you Jackie for the roll call. Do, did you receive or Mr. City Manager receive anything from Counselor Henry?
I did not today, no.
Okay, so we'll hold up a little while towards the end. If he does show up, then we'll just note at the time. If not, we'll see what council wants to do as far as an excused absence.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to inform council and staff that it doesn't look like we are broadcasting via the internet on YouTube. The clerk reported to me earlier today that there had been some Zoom meeting outages. And so we may see, be seeing some residual effects from that. We had hoped their system issues has been resolved by now, but so I'll try to follow up as, as we go through the meeting.
Okay, thank you for Mr. Estucci, well Counselor Estucci for pointing that out. And sounds like Jackie's working on something for getting that broadcasted out through our website.
Yes, I'll start another meeting on the background and then I'll link it in just a few minutes. So I'll be in the background working.
Thank you. Okay, so up next we have our public comment report section. My city manager, do we get any public comments from, from our citizens?
We did not receive any public comments for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. And if council members get a chance to read your email, there was a small, a couple corrections made to the minutes. Where on the August 3rd, 2020 workshop meeting, we had our chief Escalera listed as both present and excused. And that one got fixed. Also, on the August 12th, 2020 payroll vouchers, we uploaded the same item for both 2B and 2C. So you should have gotten this by email, but I know it was a bit of a last minute item. If you feel like we need to pull item C, so that we have a time to review them. We were open for that. I did, I did get a chance to review myself and nothing stood out. So I'll open it to suggestions from council and see what you guys want to do. Okay, hearing that, it sounds like we got a chance to, most of us review it. I think we're okay to move forward then. So at this point, we're going to look at the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for the August 3rd, 2020 workshop. The minutes for the August 10th regular meeting. The approval of vouchers, payroll vouchers numbers 118795 through 118801. And wire transfers is listed for 394,758.20 cents for the period ending on August 10th, 2020. Approved clean vouchers numbers 99649 through 99696. And wires, wire transfers is listed for 123,306.97 cents for the period ending on August 12th, 2020. I will now call each council member to ensure you have an opportunity to ask any questions on the consent agenda. And we'll start with Deputy Mayor Stremler.
I have no questions.
Counselor Hicks?
No questions.
Counselor Estucci?
No questions.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Burisma?
Question, sir.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Okay, no question, comments on this item. So what is the desire of council?
Motion to approve.
Was that Deputy Mayor Farmer? I mean Deputy Mayor Stremler or?
Deputy Mayor Stremler and Counselor Estucci, I'll second.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Stremler. Okay, so the motion by Deputy Mayor Stremler, second by Councilmember Estucci to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any debate on this item? You know, debate, the city clerk will now start the roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Estucci?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Counselor Gettle, or Mayor Gettle, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Oh, he's not here. Counselor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Okay, you have six yes votes.
Thank you much. So that passes, so motion is good to pass, I'm good to go. Up next we have our act of agenda, which is going to be item A, public camping ordinance. Consider adopting an ordinance established in chapter 9.40 for the municipal code regarding public camping. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Councils had several discussions recently regarding the case law governing how cities may regulate homelessness. Some specific concerns were raised about persons residing in vehicles parked at a city-owned parking lot. Did want to update council and the public that may be listening that in July, we did reach out to the homeless network of Yakima County and through their outreach team. We've had some progress. We're aware that one of the residents has now relocated to housing in Yakima and their two vehicles have been removed. And the owners of the two remaining vehicles are also reported to have potential housing in the works. As we've found, our current city codes regarding parking or loitering don't completely address these situations. The Ninth Circuit in Martin v. Boise in 2018 held that criminalizing sitting, sleeping, or lying in all public spaces when no alternative sleeping space is available violates the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution. Following these discussions, the council asked the city attorney to help draft an ordinance to regulate camping on public property. We are not the first to have to wrestle with this issue or try to come up with legally sound solutions. And so we were actually fortunate to be able to look just up the highway towards Union Gap, which adopted a similar ordinance earlier this year. And our ordinance is modeled in large part on the work that they did. The ordinance before you tonight would define and restrict public encampments on public property. Would provide an enforcement mechanism for the cleanup and removal of unauthorized encampments. And would set penalties for violations. Consistent with the Martin v. Boise case, and enforcement would be suspended when no meaningful alternatives are available. In council's last discussion on August 10th, there was a question for clarification requested. I did have a chance to review this with the city attorney. And as we kind of indicated on the 10th, if the city were to designate a public camping site, or if a private group set up a camp or shelter space on private or religious property. Question was, could the city then require homeless residents to move there? Short answer is no, government cannot compel or force someone to relocate to such a site. However, that being said, if such a site or sites existed that had adequate space for a local, for the local homeless population. Our understanding of current case law is the city in that case would be permitted to enforce non-compliance with a public camping ordinance at other locations. Since a meaningful alternative would be available. The ordinance before you in the packet is essentially the same content as would be at, that was reviewed last, at the last meeting for chapter 9.40. The main addition I want to point out is there is an actual enacting ordinance now facing that. Detailing the findings of council and, and the action to enact the ordinance. So those two elements work together. And then finally, in the packet for your information, we worked with Yakima County's GIS services, which provide some of our, our mapping. And have attached a map of the city-owned parcels. Most of them, I think, as, as we mentioned in the, in the packet for council, most of them are either currently used for city facilities and operations. Whether it's our, like city hall, fire station, Mont Justice Center, or our public workshops. Or they're involved with the parks and recreation system of the city. Or a lot of the smaller ones turn out, those are primarily associated with our, our wellheads and with our lift stations for our water systems. But happy to answer any questions on those. Either myself or Public Works Director Fisher, he's probably more conversant in, in some of those details even than, than I am. So with that, we'd be happy to answer questions or entertain council's discussion.
Okay, council members, so we'll start with Counselor Estucci for questions or comments.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Farmer?
Question and, and a comment, I guess. As I read the ordinance, somebody could pitch a tent in one of our city parks and live there. Is that correct?
It is currently allowed under statute. There's no, there's no prohibition currently in our codes. And this would enact regulations governing such activity. Although unless there's an alternative available, the courts would hold that we have to suspend enforcement for now.
So the, the short answer is, is somebody could camp in our park?
That would, that would be a possibility, yes.
Okay. I, I I'm a little disappointed in the ordinance. I, I totally understand the predicament legally we are in. I, I guess this ordinance is better than no ordinance. But it's, I, I think this kind of needs to be a work in progress or a research in progress. I, I, like I said, I'm not, I'm not happy with it, but it, but it's better than what we've got and, and at least it's a starting place. And that, that would be my comment for now.
Okay, Counselor Burisma?
Yes, sir. I, I agree with Counselor Farmer on this one. It's not ideal. I think there's some work still that needs to be done and we need to continue to look at this and discuss options. But yeah, this is a step in the right direction.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
I, I already got no, no questions, just a comment. I agree with what Counselor Farmer, Counselor Burisma. As I say, I, I think we do need to address, especially the park issue. Don't really want homeless people camping where we expect their kids to go and play. So I mean, I'd like to see this addressed somehow in the future, but I think it's a starting point at least. Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah, I think with my constituents on the issues, but it is a good start.
Okay, and I'll be, okay, myself. So it sounds like legally, that's as much as we can do right now from what legal is telling us and a couple of different court cases. So it sounds like this is as good as it can get for a little while unless there's another court case that changes things. So as far as I can tell, you know, we are, obviously, because number seven is better than what we had before. And I think it's a step in the right direction. But as far as options, we're pretty limited with what was out there. So at this point, I think it's a good ordinance is going to set the stage for future, you know, development on this. But at least for now, we have something in the books that we can make reference to and, and try to minimize potential encampments throughout the city, if anything. And as long as there's alternatives out there for, for individuals who are homeless. And I think if we connect them with those services, I think we'd be better off than trying to ticket them or jail them for, for being homeless. So I'm happy with, with the, the, the progress so far on this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor? If I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I'm not sure if I heard if you called on Counselor Estucci.
Yes, he was the first one.
Okay, good. Sorry, thank you.
Yep, I was.
Yeah.
Sorry, I lost track.
Yes, we are.
Attorney Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Attorney Mayor? I believe Mr. Henry has joined us too now. If you wanted to, I don't know if you heard the conversation, but he, I believe he's joined us.
I'm here. I'm just now reading over the information. And truth is, I don't think there's much more of an ordinance we could really write with the state law here. I'm just now finishing, so.
Okay.
Like it's a step in the right direction. That's what it looks like.
All right, Counselor Henry, thank you for joining us. And just for the, for the record, I'm not sure how long you've been on, but it's 6:47 now. And we haven't done an excused absence, so at this point we are in good shape. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is the desire of council on this item?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. This is Counsel Henry.
Okay, motion by Deputy Mayor Stremler, second by Councilmember Henry to adopt an ordinance established in chapter 9.40 of the municipal code regarding public camping. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, you know, debate, I will now ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Estucci?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Burisma?
Yes.
Mayor Gettle?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Seven yes votes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, up next we have our Department of Ecology Airport Cleanup Grant. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement in the amount of $260,336.0 cents with the Washington State Department of Ecology to proceed with the pesticide cleanup at the municipal airport. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Since just about everybody involved here has far more history on this one than I do. I'm going to turn this one quickly over to the Public Works Director. This has been a long time project, over a decade in progress. And he's shepherded, shepherded it, I guess that came out right, almost every step of the way. So I'll invite Director Fisher to speak now.
I think he's muted.
Oh, yes, Shane, you're muted.
Jackie, would you be able to unmute Mr. Fisher?
The only option I have for him is to ask him to unmute, and I've been pushing it and nothing's going on.
Okay, rather than
I think he just needs to hit star six.
There he goes.
Yeah, I wasn't muted on my end. I'm not sure what was going on.
Uh-oh, you were shown as muted on ours.
Oh, okay. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Casey, Mayor, members of council. I'm sure everybody knows this, this project's been going for quite a while. If you read through the agenda cover sheet, it's, it's very detailed. It's chronological. You know, kind of history of what's gone on with this, with this cleanup. Of course, this was brought to the city's attention in 2008 by Department of Ecology, who received a, a complaint from a local resident regarding some pesticide dumping out at the airport as part of agriculture operations, crop dusting. So basically Ecology went out, took some soil samples in 2010. Found significant DDT, DDE, toxopyrene, and doldren in levels that exceeded the, the Model Toxics Control Act cleanup standards. So what that did was initiated basically a, a requirement for the city, which we did. We, we went ahead and entered into an agreement with Pacific Groundwater Group to handle the remediation of the environmental contamination. So basically what that means is, is we, we hire PGG to come in. They'll take more extensive sampling to look at really the extent of each one of those chemicals that was found at the airport. So basically through the next eight years, we went through a series of what they call remedial investigation. Work plan setups through to the Department of Ecology, which is all reviewed and approved by them. And basically what happens is, is we, you know, through this, this process, we are kind of stuck with, we are stuck with having to, you know, DOE basically comes in to take a look at the, the sampling, the groundwater wells that were put in. And from that, they try to, to basically produce a, a work plan to mitigate the issues. So as the groundwater wells went in and the sampling was taken, they, they discovered there was also contamination in the groundwater. So they went in and put further groundwater moderated wells in south of the airport along the port property to kind of get the extent of where this plume, if you will, had, had, had wandered. The good thing about the, these chemicals and these pesticides is they are very stable. It's, it's quite a bit different than having, you know, fuel tanks at gas stations and petroleum products that, that get into the groundwater. And depending on what the groundwater's doing, that plume of contamination will kind of wander around in certain areas. These chemicals and pesticides actually attach to the granular, you know, to the rocks and, and deposits. And basically they, 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 they hold on to it. They don't go anywhere. So basically through these, these series of investigations and bench testing, we, we, we found the hotspots, if you will, in the airport. And so they put together some preliminary investigation to kind of help us kind of identify the extent of the chemicals in the ground and how to get them out of the ground to get it, to get it safe again. So there's, we're, we're not quite there yet. And I know that's hard to believe. We've been through this, you know, for so long. And I know it's been a while since we, we come to council to kind of walk through this. And the, the documents, you know, leading up to this are very, very technical. I tried to make it as, as easy to understand as possible going through my agenda cover. But it is, it is kind of a head scratcher. So this, this grant we're looking at tonight is, is basically, the, the grant agreement is to complete the remedial investigation and the feasibility study, a cleanup action plan, and identify remedial actions to restore the site to a condition that is protected by human health and the environment. So basically those, those documents through remedial investigation, feasibility study, cleanup, those are evolving and kind of living, breathing plans. And so once we get those more dialed in and Ecology is satisfied with those, we'll be able to actually go out and do some excavation, remove the soils from the site, bring in clean soils, what they call amended soils, bring them in, compact them. And then the, the plan is, is to cap that area with asphalt. So that is, that is one of the, the four plans they have in sight. And that is, at this point, the most favorable, is probably the cheapest option. And so tonight, what we're looking for is the, is to authorize this manager to execute this grant with Ecology to help us finish up these studies and, and, and get this site cleaned up hopefully, hopefully next year. With that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. And we'll start with Counselor, Counselor Henry. Questions or comments on this item, Counsel Henry?
No questions, sir.
Okay, Counselor Burisma?
No questions, sir. Just to comment, if this is an opportunity to get this cleaned up and finished and over with, then I'd let say, let's get this done.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Stremler? Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No questions. No questions.
Okay, Counselor Estucci?
I have no questions, just a quick comment. In agreement with Mr. Burisma, the sooner the better when it comes to dealing with Ecology.
And Counselor? Counselor Hicks?
Yeah, I'm just, so asphalt cap would be enough to meet the requirements? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch that. Oh, well, the asphalt cap on top be enough to meet the requirements?
Well, it, it will, but they still want, they still want to excavate out what they can. Like I said, it's, it is, it's, it's, it's attached to, to the rocks and gravels in the area. So they want to get as much of that out as they can. They realize they can't, they can't dig a 12-foot deep hole, but they'd like to, you know, and get into the groundwater. They would like to get as much out as they can without disturbing, you know, the adjacent structures and properties in that area. And then put in an amended soil and compact it in there and then cap it with asphalt. Yeah, it would keep it stable. Now, if we decided to, to lease that property later on to a potential, you know, airport, you know, you know, either a private or, you know, pilot or, or business out there. We would have to go through Ecology to make sure that when they're building their structure on that site, that we follow certain things within these investigations and studies that were, that were, that were looking to get authorized tonight to make sure that they're in compliance with, with Ecology's best management practices. So it's going to be an ongoing effort by, by all parties involved to, you know, for probably the next 50 to 100 years, I'm guessing. So, but yeah.
Okay, yeah, no further questions.
Shane, I did see that there was a, a match portion for the city. Is that correct? About 26,000? Is that something we're going to have to worry about this year or next year?
Well, we'll have to see. When we sign this, we have to obligate those funds. So how that works is, is when we have buildings that come in either through Pacific Groundwater Group or any of the subcontractors as, as part of the, because Pacific Groundwater Group's going to do all these. This isn't through Ecology. So as these, as, as buildings come in, we are responsible for 90% or they're responsible for 90%. We're responsible for 10%. So as these buildings come in, yes, we need to, we need to, to budget for it this year, absolutely. But it's going to be, it's going to take us probably at least another year to get through this. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay, so it sounds like it's something for us to be planning for our budget. And obviously have it set aside so that we, if in 2021, we get to get this done, then we'll have those funds already allocated. Okay, thank you for
Correct, and I have that on, on the, the agenda cover here is, yeah, it will, it will take a budget amendment. If, if authorized and approved tonight, then we will, we will get that on the, on the, the next budget amendment.
Okay. All right, councilors, what is the desire of council on this item?
I'll move to approve. This is John Henry.
Okay, I heard Henry. I think, I thought I heard Hicks also. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so- Perfect. Thank you very much. So motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilmember Hicks to authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement in the amount of $263,306.00 with the Washington State Department of Ecology to proceed with the pesticide cleanup at the Science Municipal Airport. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, hearing no debate, the city group will now start the roll call vote.
Councilor Henry?
Aye.
Councilor Hicks?
Yeah.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilor Farmer?
Yes.
Councilor Brosma?
Yes.
Counselor Restucci?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have our items from council members. Council request status report. Mr. City Manager?
Sorry, I was muted. Apologize. All right, the clerk has loaded that for you. The first two items, no significant changes on the parking or the tree plant since our updates to you at the beginning of this month. On five cell small G, the council's information and request, request for direction or for work by the Planning Commission has been conveyed to the planning supervisor. As it happens, our planning supervisor, Mike Shuttleworth, had worked on this issue in his capacity as a planning lead over at YVCOG previously, and in fact, helped the city of Toponish draft and enact the Marvus Communication Ordinance that they just put in place earlier this year before he joined us here. So he has some familiarity with the current regulatory structure and will be working with the Planning Commission on that in the coming future. On the guardrail issue- Oh, sorry, go ahead. I'm not sure who spoke up or had a question.
Might have just been a mishap.
Okay, sorry. On the guardrails, I don't believe we've had any new updates since the report in July. We're waiting conversations with HLA on that. Shane, do you have anything new on that one?
I do not. We need to get with HLA. Set up a meeting with the SBID, so-
Oh, that's right. We've got the right away issue.
Yeah, we got right away issues there. And of course, yeah, it's just, there's some challenges with that guardrail, for sure.
Okay. And on the homelessness issues, we've been kind of periodically updating on those. And I do have a little bit of a further update tonight during my city manager's report. Plan that. And on the fire department resident volunteer program, we've begun incorporating that item in the monthly reports that go to council. I open to council's preference if you'd like to keep it on this report here or if what you're getting in those monthly reports is working well enough. We can-
This is Deputy Mayor Stremler's item. We look to Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor Stremler, are you on? Okay, he might be muted or he might be busy. So for now, we'll leave it on. And once we get clarification from him, we'll decide.
All right, happy to do that. And that's it for the current items.
Council members, anything else you want to see on this status request report? Okay.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You had asked me a question, I believe, on the residency program. If I wanted to keep it on the status report, is that correct?
Yes, you want to keep it on here or is the information getting on the monthly reports good enough?
I think, yeah, I think my phone was on mute. Yes, I do want to keep it on there.
Sounds good. Okay, we see management, so it sounds that we'll keep it on for a little bit longer.
All righty.
Thank you.
Okay, so up next in our council agenda is other reports, announcements, and our questions by council. And we'll start with Councilmember Brosma.
The only thing I have to say, sir, is that on Wednesday afternoon, the LTAC committee is meeting to take a look at the proposals that have been presented to us. So I'm looking forward to being able to give a report on that. But that's really all I've got at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Henry?
No comments. Thank you.
Council, Deputy Mayor Stremler? Okay, we'll go on to Councilor Restucci.
No comments, Mr. Mayor, although I didn't see anything on the agenda for your reappointments. I got your email with your letters. So do you want to make a motion to submit your, or to support your reappointments through the commission?
Yes, I'll do them right here at the very end of this one. But thank you for the reminder. Do have them open on my screen. But yes, we'll be doing that here shortly.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Farmer?
Yes, I've got something. The last couple of weeks, I have had several citizens contact me. As a matter of fact, I even sent a text off to the city manager regarding our citizens are now having to send, if they choose to mail their utility bills to Utah. I find that a little strange. I guess the questions I have, number one, is how much is that service costing us? And I'm sure we have an interest-bearing checking account. And right now, the interest is minute at best. So we're, so we are going to be without that money, I would imagine for a minimum of four or five days, that we could have it in our own bank account drawing interest. Are the lag time between when it gets, a check gets sent in Sunnyside and by the time it travels to Utah, by the time they process it, and then it's got to come back to Sunnyside, we might have some citizens go past due. I'm just wondering the reason why we're doing this.
So I'll begin the answer and then invite the finance director to discuss the details of the program. As council is where we offer residents a variety of ways to pay their utility bills. We accept cash payments at City Hall in our drop boxes, although COVID, we've been discouraging that. But we are still allowing for that. We also accept payments dropped off at City Hall by check and so forth. And we have our Express Pay online payment option, which more and more users are using. This past week, we had our monthly bills due on the 20th. And we had, it was exceptionally smooth. We had no lines outside City Hall as we did at the beginning of the pandemic as changes were coming on rather abruptly. But that, those systems all seem to be working well. The finance director briefed council, I think, a few weeks back on a change to the lockbox service for payment processing. And I'll ask her to kind of describe what that is and what that option provides, I mean, as well as answer the other questions that you brought up about its operations. And she'll need to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we did extensive research on how many payments we process in-house. And we realized that our check payment processes were quite cumbersome. And now when they go to Express, it takes less time for us to actually get the money in our account. And really, that's the bottom line. We want to be able to save the city money, save what we're putting out.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Councilmember Farmer, is that, answer your question?
How much does service cost in this?
I would have to get back to you on that because actually I did an analysis. It'll take me a couple minutes to pull it up. But we did look at it before we sent it out.
I would be interested in those numbers. It just, it seems kind of strange to me that they can, a citizen of Sunnyside can send money to Utah and it will be in our banking account before, if they send it to Sunnyside and Sunnyside puts it in the bank account. It just seems strange to me that it's quicker to send money to Utah and let them process it and come back to Sunnyside than it is for it to come direct to Sunnyside. Those are just the concerns I have.
And banking has come a long ways from back in the days. And with the advent of same-day ACH transfers, that has switched, has changed a whole lot of things. So the fact that we get, we're used to having to wait four or five days for a check to clear an account, for example. Well, those days are, we're gone. That's no longer the case unless the person doesn't deposit into their account. But same-day ACH processing, those electronic transfers happen basically within hours. So based on, depending on what it is that technology that the company is using, potentially as soon as they get the check, it could be in our account the very next day or same day if they're there before the cutoff. So I could see that happening. But obviously, I know a little bit about banking, so I kind of have an idea what the changes that have been a positive. I don't know much about this company, but I do know that things have changed recently and for the better for some individuals and not so much for others. So yeah, once we get those numbers, I guess we got to go look at them and find out what is it that's costing and what we're saving, I guess.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for council, I have a question for Councilor Farmer because I'm confused by his comments. Mike, why do they have to send something to Utah?
That's where they send it. That is the address on the statement that we send our customers. And the checks are sent to Utah. That is the address we send them.
So Express Bill Pay is a company, okay. But our people aren't, they don't send them to Utah, though, right? I mean, they mail them to the city's address, don't they?
No, they've made, well, they probably can send them to the city, but the address on the statement is Utah.
Right. And that must, okay, that must be because Express Bill Pay is a company located in Utah, right? Is that correct?
And I'll ask, I don't know that this is, it may be their payment processing center, but yes, is in most, almost none of my bills anymore are anywhere in Washington State. I send them all over the country for processing. I, as I said at the beginning, though, we still offer all residents the local options if they're more comfortable with those options, including paying by cash or paying by check in the drop boxes here at City Hall or using the online Express Pay option, which is, as Mayor Guerrero mentioned, almost instantaneous. So we are still giving folks options. But the lockbox system that the finance director had explored and researched, those payments are sent to a processing center in Utah. And so that's the address that people see on their bills to mail those payments to.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure, like Councilor Farmer mentioned, I didn't want us to be forcing people to mail to Utah. That doesn't make any sense to me either. So I'd like to look a little bit more into this. I appreciate the report the finance director's going to put together on this.
I do too, no.
I strongly supported, I'm sorry, Mike. I strongly supported us moving online to allow for online payments. So I want to make sure we have the right solution in place.
I think we are the only, from my short little bit of talking to people in different communities, we are the only community doing that here in the valley. That there, that I have found so far.
Seawis takes payments from Express Bill Pay as well. So I know Seawis does. I don't know about other cities.
Okay, up next, we have, actually, that's it. Any additional questions or comments from council members, reports, announcements, and our questions?
I have a question being, Mr. Farmer kind of aroused this concern of mine. When we mail a payment to Utah, if it gets there after the due date, is there a late charge? I mean, we could be looking at a week longer giving the check to a process center in Utah than mailing it to City Hall here in town. Is there an automatic late charge if it gets to Utah a day late?
Director, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Can you speak to that?
We have a protocol in place that will make sure that people that have mailed their payments in on time will get credit for their late charge.
I think it's similar to banking. I think the post-dated, post-date on the actual envelope is the one that counts. So if you mailed it in time, you know, once it gets received, then obviously it won't have an incurability because of the mail and the post-date on the actual envelope is the one that counts.
Yes, that's what we use.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I do have a couple items that got brought up. One was our recycling center, Mr. City Manager. Somebody asked me what items we allowed to recycle, and I couldn't give them a good answer. And so I told them I was going to look into it because as far as I know, I usually only take cardboard. But some states were saying that they could take plastic bottles. And they were asking about glass bottles and newspapers, magazines. I told them I wasn't sure, and I was going to get clarification. And since they had a question and I didn't know myself, I wondered if it might be possible made to put on some sort of a sign of the items that are recyclable at the water department there. Those yellow bins, orange bins. And that way, somebody shows up with glass bottles, they won't be putting in those containers if we don't recycle it. Because I know other communities I've seen where it's glass-only a container. And here seems to be a mixed, a mixture of different recyclable items. So they did bring that up to me. I wasn't sure what I should give them. So I told them I was going to bring it up. And if you could put a sign of a list or even images of something that is and isn't, that way we won't overwhelm those containers with non-recyclable items.
I appreciate the suggestion. I'll ask, if Shane is still on the phone, Director Fisher, do you have just some quick information you can provide? Because I think that is a good question. I'm not sure what we accept there or don't either.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's not, it is mixed recycling. So it doesn't matter what bin you put it in. You can put cardboard, newspaper, paper, plastic bottles, glass. All goes in mixed together. There's not designated bins for each. So, but yeah, we take those four, though. Magazines, those type of things are all part of recycling.
So glass bottles as well, Shane, as we said?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. I'll make sure I get back to them, let them know that those are items that are recyclable.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question and/or a comment, I guess. I was under the understanding that Yakima County does not, does not sort through our garbage and recycle. And the same way with our garbage people, that they do not sort through and recycle it. So is, in fact, is this stuff really being recycled or is it just being hauled to the dump?
This is Shane again. Yeah, I, Mr. Farmer, I've heard that same saying. I've heard that it doesn't get sorted out. I'm not sure what they do with it once it gets to the transfer station. I don't know if they put those in separate trucks and truck it or if they- I don't know if they put those in separate trucks and truck it, or if they just mix it in with regular refuse. I'm not sure, we can, we could sure find out. Have Director Al would call up to Yakima Waste tomorrow and find out what their process is for that.
I don't think they're recycling, especially now, because the dollars just aren't there to do it. It cost them more to do it than it would not to do it.
Yeah, I've heard that as well.
And another thing that got brought up also was, now that Burrell's opened up on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, I believe, they asked about the parking in front of the building. I know they talked about it, that we're gonna, now that we're painting some of the stripes in the street, that's something we're going to be looking at. And I told them we had brought it up before already, but I would bring it up again to see if that's on our list of to-dos. And that way, when people are driving south on, I believe it's Fifth Street, they don't creep out too far out and potentially get into an accident with another uncoming vehicle.
And I do recall that question. Oh, go ahead, Shane, have you taken that up with HLA?
Well, not with HLA so much, is I talk mostly with my street department. And changing that parking from angle, angle-in parking to, to parallel parking, where they just park along the curb line as opposed to nosing in. That would, that would give it about 10 more feet at least of visual, you know, looking west. And that would be our solution. But you're right, when COVID happened and things got shut down, you know, we just, you know, we didn't do anything at that time. But now things, you know, are opening back up, yeah, we'll definitely need to address it. And our guys are painting right now, so we need to touch base with, with the operators there, let them know what our plan is, and they go from there.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we're, as long as we're on Fifth Street, there's something just popped in my mind. The charging stations that were installed, are they, are they free for the public to use, or is there a cost for that? And if there's a cost, who pays it?
So there is a charge, they're not operational yet, they won't be actually going live for a couple more weeks. We've still got some work to finalize with the painting and setup. But when they do go live, the operator of the charging station, charger, they're set up to be able to accept a card or a payment system from the users. And under the arrangements with Pacific Power, they, it's essentially a cost recovery. They will pay for the power that they use, and Director Fisher is working on that, finalizing all of those details. But between Pacific Power and the charging station user, or the charging station vendor.
Okay, now you just brought something up that I didn't know about. You say there's going to be an attendant there?
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't say attendant. There's, no, there won't any, there's a charging station operator, there's a vendor who electronically manages and monitors the use of the station, and then, but there's nobody physically present.
Nobody physically present, there'll just be a machine where you slide a card, then?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, all right.
And we're looking at putting together media release when that's ready to roll out publicly. Part of the objective with this project was to promote visitors who can come into town, close that gap on I-82 between Yakima and Benton City, and come in, charge their vehicles here, and take advantage of the businesses that are open, and hopefully more as we continue opening. And so we're planning to do a media release when they're operational, as well as we're working to research the process. There's a way to get these marked on Google, so that if you search for charging stations in your GPS and Google, you'll, it'll pop up as available for you.
Okay, Council, the last thing I have is, we received two reappointment letters for Planning Commissioners, Britton Moore and Roland Rogers, regarding extending their term to expire on June 30th, 2024. You did receive that in an email, they both have been on the Planning Commission already. So unless there's any objection to one of these planning commissioners.
I would move to support the mayor's appointment, reappointments of Britton Moore and Roland Rogers to the Planning Commission.
I would support that.
Okay, two supporters, if there's no objection, then we'll go ahead and reappoint them to the Planning Commission. Okay, here, no objection, so ordered. Jackie, they are good to go, if you could send those letters out, I would greatly appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. Upcoming council meetings, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Coming up, our next, next meeting is a little ways out after the Labor Day holiday. It's occurring on a Tuesday because of the holiday, that'll be September 8th. And this is kind of turning out to be a great introduction to the city's new planning supervisor, Mike Shuttleworth. We have been kind of pulling together three different projects, similar time path, and they're just kind of coming together well for a planning and land use workshop. So first element will be an overview of statutory framework for impact fees. There's been interest from council, oh, sorry, interest from council on possibility of setting impact fees at some point. So we thought a good starting point for that would be to just go over the statutory requirements and framework that governs how those are done. At council's request, the Planning Commission has been working on developing a proposal for a new accessory dwelling unit ordinance. That work is now ready to bring forward to council for initial review and then potential action later in September. And then, we're working with the city attorney. Council's aware that, let me find the numbers here, final certified results. Proposition 1, to authorize the council to enact a sales and use tax increase for our local transportation projects, passed with 759 to 702 votes, or 52 to 48%. So we're working on the final council measure to enact the increase, which by state law would take effect on January 1 of 2021. And so that's what we've got, I think I just blurred two things together, didn't I? I blurred the last item from September 14th, my apologies. The transportation benefit district sales and use tax ordinance would be on September 14th. Going back to the September 8th workshop, the last item on the workshop will be one of the first elements to come before council, coming out of our work to update the city's comprehensive plan under the Growth Management Act. And one of the required elements is a public participation plan that outlines how the public will have opportunities to comment on and be involved in the development of the other plan elements. And so Mr. Shuttleworth's been working with Planning Commission on that, and will be briefing council on that on September 8th. So apologize for the confusion, I just looked down to the wrong item, wrong final item on the agenda. With that, I'll jump to September 14th, regular meeting. Mayor, this is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, so Mayor's planning to do a proclamation for that. The Launching Tax Advisory Committee had asked for some revisions and to look at some ways to strengthen the language in our contracts for tourism services agreements. The city attorney is working on that, and we're planning to bring that back to the council for discussion. And then, lastly, as I mentioned, the transportation benefit district sales and use tax ordinance. Right now, for September 28th and October 5th, we don't have items yet scheduled. We are looking further ahead and starting to plug in some of the budget and future activities. We're expecting to be able to bring the LTAC funding recommendations to council in October, as well as with the passage of the Transportation Benefit District, we should be in a position to sign the commitment letter for the Transportation Improvement Board Fuel Tax Agreement, which we have to commit to by November of this year, if we're going to go forward with the Midvale Road project. Council can see that there's also some other items that we have kind of in the works, don't yet have slotted in their timeframes, but more and more, you're going to start seeing budgetary items added to these. For example, both your November 9th and November 23rd, regular meetings will be budget hearings. So we'll start slotting those activities in, in the upcoming planning agendas for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the agenda.
Council members, questions on the future agenda items? Okay, here, no questions, move on to our next item, which is items from City Manager and Department Heads.
All right, I've got just a handful of topics before turning it over. Wanted to give council an update on the COVID-19 pandemic. As of this evening, the Yakima County Health District has reported 11,477 cases and 223 deaths in Yakima County from COVID-19. Currently, 16 residents are in the hospital. This represents a continuing decline in both new cases and in hospitalizations, in large part due to the intensive masking-up efforts in the Valley. Over the last 14 days, we've averaged just over 36 new cases a day, which actually takes us nearly back to the rates of infection that we were seeing at the beginning of May. About 86% of our cases are now considered recovered, which is an increase of about 6% over two weeks ago. And that's also good news, because it represents that the number of folks and the rate at which folks are deemed recovering from COVID-19 is higher than the rate at which we're adding new infections. So all of that is encouraging. In addition, the county has had some success in negotiating incremental adjustments under our Roadmap to Recovery in the Modified Pays One Plan. Local officials and business groups continue to work with various specific business sectors on safety plans, so that we can try to demonstrate to state health officials that there are areas that we can manage to reopen safely. And actually, just got an email short while before the meeting. YVCOG has set a quick conference call for tomorrow afternoon with the Health District to talk about some additional potential changes. So I'll be eager to learn more at that meeting. Social gatherings continue to be an area of concern, especially if residents are gathering in large groups or with extended family or friends, but not wearing masks or staying six feet apart. And although all the local school districts, public school districts have opted for remote learning this fall, we do know that a few of the private school systems in the Valley do plan on in-person instruction. Yakima Health District has advised that, based on what they're seeing already in other states, they are working to be ready in the event that there are any outbreaks in those private school systems. A lot of work underway in that. Kind of stepping back, statewide, we have just passed a little over 71,000 cases and 19, almost 1,900 deaths in Washington. We did see in many of the other counties, sharp rise in new cases that in the counties that had advanced to Phase 2 or 3 under the Safe Start Washington Plan. As they added new activities, they increased exposures and they started adding new cases. By late July, it was really concerning, and so the state paused for the reopening, expanded mandatory mask requirements. Those are having an effect. We have now, since the end of July, reduced new infections back to the level that we were seeing in late June. So we're on a good, heading in a good direction. As council's aware, the governor and legislature extended several state orders related to COVID-19 through the start of September. It's expected pretty widely that they will extend them further some point later this week, but we haven't had any confirmations yet on that. So encouraging trends with COVID-19, but not through this pandemic yet. My next topic, wanted to update on another element, an issue that had been brought to council, reported to council, regarding there was a report of a freeway homeless encampment. And we've shared with council that turned out to be on land owned by the state, State Department of Transportation, which has jurisdiction of that site. I learned today that the state has now issued 72-hour notice to remove that encampment, and that they plan to follow through midweek. I'm advised that at least one of the residents may have lived there for the past two years, pretty much on their own. But the camp expanded this summer to about six or eight residents, which started creating some other new problems. I have reached out today to the Yakima County Homeless Network and tried to see if they can get an outreach team down to assist those residents before Wednesday, to see if we can get some of them rehoused, or either here or up in the Yakima area. So continuing to monitor those situations. And then for public's awareness, just wanted to report on council's budget retreat from this Saturday. This was our kickoff to start preparations for our 2021 budget preparations. It was a lot of information, and we very much appreciated council's patience and tenacity in staying with all of that. We reviewed recent state audit findings and past fund imbalances. Want to acknowledge again the combined efforts of city staff and council support in helping us end 2019 with positive balances and with spending within budget in all audited funds for this first time in a decade. We reviewed our debt capacity, which is currently in a very strong position. However, we pointed out, kind of like having a high-limit credit card, just because you've got room on the card doesn't mean you want to run up your balance. It's going to be hard for you to make the monthly payments. We also looked at our 2020 revenues and expenditures to date, which continue to be in good shape. And we offered some preliminary estimates of the 2021 expenditures we expect, factoring inflation, and of course, discuss the impacts that we're seeing from COVID-19. I think we're fortunate to have a diversified mix of revenue streams, so that the impacts from COVID-19 have not been as severe as we've seen in some other cities. Even so, we recognize that the future trends do remain a little unclear. The national economy shrank significantly in the second quarter, and consumer confidence declined. And there are still about 30 million US workers on unemployment. However, recent sales tax revenues have been strong. We think that's in part due to pent-up demand from the economic shutdown in the spring, as well as the added federal unemployment benefits. And I actually heard on radio news this evening that Washington State is moving forward with the $300 a week unemployment benefit that was just issued through the federal government. So those unemployment benefits looks like they're going to continue, at least in part. We'll, of course, be closely watching both our revenues and our expenditures as we work to deliver a preliminary budget to council by the end of October. We still foresee a very conservative budget to maintain the essential service levels that we currently provide. But we have a lot of work to do between now and December, and appreciate all the hard work everybody's already put in to get us to where we are currently. So for that, that's my report, and I'll start turning it over to the Department Heads. It looks like Director Fisher may still be live. So since you're the only one not muted at the moment, I think I'll let you go first.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, I've got several items to give updates on. The tree of Central Park, we'll be signing a contract, hopefully sometime this week, with House Tree Service to get that tree taken down and removed from the park and get the stump ground out. It was a diseased tree, it's in pretty bad shape, so very urgent to get that out of the way. City staff has completed the painting in the pool basin and the kiddie pool, and
City staff has completed the painting in the pool basin and the kiddie pool and it looks great. You guys get a chance to go take a look at it. I want to put some sunglasses on, it gets super, super bright. The pool house painting is about 95% complete. They got a few items to finish up in there. They're getting the lockers put in now, but it looks great. Can't wait to get you guys down there to take a look at it. The East Edison Project put paving down today and they'll be putting landmarkings down the next day or two and will be completing out of there by Friday. And Swan Ridge, Dr. Gary Martin's project was paved last week. And so he's just doing a few punchless items, that was him today up there on his stop signs and street designation signs, so he's getting really close also. Columbia Heights Development also paved their one-laners. That's back open to two lanes again, thank goodness. It's been a long time as a single lane. And then staff this week is also working on erecting the shade bench on the pathway, which was donated to us through the Lower Valley Pathway Association earlier, earlier this year. But of course, COVID happened, so it really wasn't our priority to get it put up. And so we, we held off, but since the pool is getting buttoned up, we've got time this week. So you'll see the guys out there. And that, the next structure will go directly across from Central Park. They're at Alexander Road and YDH, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Director Fisher. Let's go to Chief Anderson, are you ready? Maybe? I better try to go to Chief Anderson and then Chief Escalera and then we'll wrap up with Director Alva. There he goes.
Oh, sorry about that. Something's different with it tonight. It keeps going to, we have to unmute it from our end, that's something different than Pat. But I have, I have really nothing new. I mean, we, some council members may have seen us this weekend. We took the opportunity on Sunday to do some chainsaw training and clean up that tree that fell. We actually took some limbs and tried to clean up the park a little bit while we're waiting to have that tree taken down. But there was no injuries and it was a great opportunity, so thank you, thank you to Mr. Casey and Mr. Fisher. Other than that, I don't have anything else. If council members have questions.
Escalera?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I just got a couple of quick things to report. Currently, we have two of our personnel that have contracted COVID-19. When, one is the second time around, so I worked with Mr. Fisher and we got ABM in there to disinfect on Monday morning. So that company came in at seven o'clock and did their, and did their job again, so they did a good job there. So hopefully that's going to be contained there, we won't have anything else spreading throughout the building. The second thing is basically the, we're trying to establish a community event through our trunk or treat event that we do every year. We are putting it together and have been putting it together for the last 30 days or so, but it's just trying to develop a way to keep the kids and the parents in the cars. And I think we have done that through static displays in a route that can be done where the traffic continues to flow and kids are able to receive candy. But we won't finalize anything until the next, probably for the next couple of weeks here. And we'll keep you posted on that. Other than that, I have nothing else and could stand for questions if you have any.
And Director Alba?
Thank you.
I don't see her here anymore.
Oh, okay, thank you, Jackie. Clerk Renteria, do you have any updates?
Yes, I do, sorry, I had trouble finding the unmuted. So, so far we've received 53.8% of residents of Sunnyside have responded to the census. The, so we're just encouraging the public to complete the census online, by phone or by mail. Residents don't have to have the slip that gets mailed, you can just call in or go online and get that filled out. And then also, the LTAC is meeting on Wednesday to review the proposals that was, that were received for 2021 lodging tax funds. I had pushed that back on the planning schedule because I read an RCW that required 45 days, but I requested clarification on that one and it just, they said it can be sooner than 45 days. So I'll just put that back on to September 14th, as long as LTAC is okay with that as well.
Okay.
And that's it for me for now.
All right, thank you.
So is that Mr. City Manager?
That would be it.
All right, thank you. Up next, we have our adjournment. So there be no further business to come before council and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at 7:46 PM. Thank you, everyone, and have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.